All right. Good afternoon. It's wonderful to see everyone virtually. I hope you all are staying healthy and safe. We're going to go ahead and get started. My name is Katie Brenly, and I'm a PhD student studying special education and disability leadership. And I'm also the Chair of the Student Leadership Council in the School of Education. I'll be the moderator for today's virtual town hall with Dean Dare. Before we begin, I ask that everyone please mute their microphones. And it looks like everyone already has, so we're already ahead of the game. This will make it easier for everyone to hear Dean Dare and each other throughout our conversation today. A few other things once we get started, just a quick disclaimer that today's virtual town hall will be recorded so that all those who may have missed the meeting can watch it back over again. The recording will be emailed to students and posted on social media as well. If you have a question, feel free to use the raise your hand feature, then we will call on you, so be ready for that. You may also submit your questions directly in the chat area for me to pose to the dean. And finally, if you want to ask your question anonymously, you are welcome to send me your question privately in the chat. Meredith Mello and Corey Humphrey, who both work in the School of Education's Alumni and Student Engagement Office, are both here to help run things smoothly, so you may see their names pop up in the chat throughout the town hall. The purpose of the virtual town hall today is to check in with my fellow students and to give you all the chance to ask any questions you have for the dean during this uncertain time. So Dean Dare, it's great to see you. How are you holding up?
Katie, how are you? Doing, doing well. It's definitely, I think the phrase that most folks use are unprecedented times. I was thinking I was going to try to find that. There's a meme with Medea holding a gun saying, if somebody says unprecedented times one more time. And if I was a technologically savvy, I would have that pop up as my, you know, scream when I hit the video close thing, but I am not that sophisticated. But, you know, it's, it truly is unusual times, you know, I think in the Dare household. You know, you know, we're, we're subject to some of the same challenges that everyone has. I have a son who is a second semester freshman at VCU. So, you know, I check in with him and he's had to make that transition to remote instruction. And it's interesting to see how his different professors are handling the remote instruction and, you know, and conversations to him, you know, some things he likes about it, some things he doesn't. I have a daughter who is a high school senior. And, you know, I think one of the things that we're a bit disappointed about is that, you know, she'll, she'll have no prom and she'll have no graduation, you know, and, and so kind of dealing with that. But the, the good news is she officially, you know, she got accepted to actually all the universities she applied to. She applied to, I think, 13 or 14, and as of last night, has officially accepted VCU. So I will have two students at VCU, so really excited about that. And, and it's also been kind of interesting because I had foot surgery. I had surgery on my Achilles March 2nd and was out for a week. And when I came back the next week, that was when everything started shutting down with coronavirus. So with it being my right foot, I've kind of been homebound anyways. But did go to the grocery store for the first time on Saturday, and that was quite interesting because I really hadn't been in a grocery store since the end of February. And so to see how things have shifted and, you know, being kind of outside in the real world with a mask on, you know, it's, it's definitely different. But I'm excited to, to have this, you know, this opportunity to check in, you know, to check in with our students. And so I'm really excited about this town hall and, you know, definitely want to, you all to have an opportunity to ask any questions. I know we're going to post some things, you know, throughout the chat. But in, in preparing for this, Corey asked me a really good question. He's like, you know, what are the three things that you want students to leave with, you know, at the end of this town hall? And I think the first one is I want you all to know that we understand. You know, we understand that this is an unexpected and significant disruption to probably all facets of your life, not just your academic lives. Many of you all have lost your jobs, whether they be part-time or full-time jobs. You've got family members who have lost their jobs. You're concerned about your physical health, but you're also concerned about the physical health of your loved ones. You're concerned about your mental health and mental illness of yourself and your loved ones and family and friends. And, and so I think the first thing is just for you all to know that we understand that this is a very tough time. I think the, not think, I know. The second thing is that we want you all to know that we're here to help, right? We, we want you to know that, that, that we're all here to help ensure that during these different transitions, that you're not only able to successfully meet your academic goals, but we want to make sure that we're supporting you any way we can. And our associate deans, department chairs, our student services office and, and, you know, and others and myself are, are here to help. And, and if it's something out of our purview, you know, we, we, we still want to be able to help. The university, I think, has, has been very comprehensive in its response to students. We're going to post some information on this chat on, on some, on two forums that were sent out by the university. If one is a link, if you want to request help for yourself, and another is a link if you want to request help for another student. And so we definitely want you to have that information. But we also want you to contact us if you have any questions. And we're going to post an email address, soe@vcu.edu. So we'll make sure that Meredith or Corey or somebody post that email, soe@vcu.edu. That email is checked multiple times a day. And so we want you to, you know, definitely send us a question, concern, comment, and we'll definitely respond. And then the third thing is that we want you to know that there's a lot that we just don't know. You know, I, I make sure I watch the news. I, I catch the governor's press conference. You know, I try to catch that when I can or, or at least catch the highlights because, you know, that's going to impact what happens here at VCU. So we don't know when, you know, we don't know exactly when Virginia is going to hit the apex of COVID-19. We know that we're not doing as bad as some of the other states. And I think that's because, you know, we did a shelter in place order, you know, a little bit earlier than some other states like Florida and South Carolina and things like that. But, you know, the last I heard, I think we're going to hit the apex towards the end of the month. And then, you know, but that doesn't mean it's over. We then, that's just when the curve flattens and then it goes down. And so the governor has a June 10th, you know, at least that's the date that, that, that he and his team are shooting for. You all saw the email that VCU made the decision to move remotely or to move to remote instruction for any summer courses beginning before June 9th. But, you know, we're, we're paying attention to this and hoping that we can be back to whatever the new normal is in the fall semester. One of the concerns that we have is that if this happens to continue into fall and if we end up, if, you know, if we're, if, if we're having to teach remotely in the fall, we anticipate that that is going to create upwards of a 20 to 30% enrollment drop in the fall because obviously many new students, you know, want to come to school for the on-campus experience. If that happens, that's going to be a significant financial, even more of a financial impact on, on the university. And then, you know, that impact is obviously going to get passed down to the schools. But we do anticipate we are going to have a significant budgetary impact. And my dean's cabinet, which is myself, the associate deans and department chairs, along with our finance director, we moved from meeting every other week to meeting weekly because we want to make sure that we can be responsive to your needs and, and the needs of the School of Ed. So, so although there's a lot that we don't know, what I do know and what I can tell you for sure is that in spite that there are things that we don't know, that we will be making our decisions based on what is responsible and from a place of compassion and understanding. And I think that's the most important thing that, you know, I want you all to, you know, take away. I guess the three most important things is that we understand, we're here to help, and there's a lot that we don't know. But we're definitely going to be making decisions that are responsible with compassion and understanding to the situation that you all are in as, as students. So I think I will stop there and see what questions you all might have, or Corey or Meredith, if there's something I didn't touch on, I can definitely touch on some more things.
Thank you so much, Dean Dare. We really appreciate you being available and accessible to us students during this time. It definitely presents a unique challenge for all of us. And it's good to hear some good news, especially with your daughter entering VCU, so that's really exciting. So congratulations to her. And this is the opportunity to open up for questions. As a reminder, you can use the raise your hand feature that's located on Zoom. You may also submit your questions in the chat area to pose to the dean. Or you can also send your questions anonymously to myself if you would like to have them sent privately. So first, I'll get started with a few questions that were submitted through a Google forum, sent out to everyone ahead of time. And so the first question was, I know there are students who are doing practicum hours during their spring semester. With school closures, how is this being addressed and handled?
That is a very good question. And I know we sent out some communication to students regarding those practicum hours. And our, our executive director for licensure and accreditation, Dr. Joan Johnson, she's in regular communication with the state. And I know the, the state has made some adjustments or modifications in terms of how, how that's handled. I think I will let, I don't know if it would be Jewel or Breon can probably provide some more technical detail on that. I know you all are also on the call.
I'm still waiting on confirmation from Dr. Johnson as to whether or not they'll have to make up the hours moving forward. But students should be able to complete their coursework, the assignments that they need to do their current classes to keep progressing through the program. It's just what I've heard from students is the question of if I only did 40 out of the 60, what happens to the other 20 hours that I didn't complete? How do I complete those hours? And that may be what you're talking about with Dr. Johnson being in communication with the state and accommodations that they're making for students. But that has been one question that I've had.
Right. And just to add, I, I've seen a few emails about it also. And I know they're going to take in consideration the students and the most lenient policy possible with resolving that. And I don't think I've seen a final answer to it yet. But just taking in consideration what the students are experiencing now and, and being very understanding with that.
Great.
Thank you all for the responses to that first question. The second question is what sorts of clubs, student clubs and organizations are still available for undergraduate students?
I don't think there's been a disruption in any of the student organizations. I think each organization is, is really looking at how they're going to, you know, function in terms of moving to remote meetings and using the Zoom platform. But, you know, there's, there's not been any type of closure, so to speak, for those student organizations. I know our student life office, our, our student life office, campus life, I know they're staying actively involved and trying to make sure that they stay engaged with students and to make sure that students are connected and engaged with the various resources that are available.
Great. Thank you so much for your feedback. The third question is one of the pieces of feedback received from undergraduate students is that with the undergraduate programs being new, many are still finding their place and space in Oliver Hall. This was mentioned in terms of course availability, representation on applications and paperwork, the lack of an undergraduate handbook. What kinds of things are you and faculty working on to address this?
Yeah. So, you know, one of the things that happened with the, with the approval process for the bachelor's programs, you know, that was, we were definitely responding to some decisions that were made in the state in terms of the approval of those programs. And I'm also on vice chair for the Advisory Board for Teacher Education and Licensor. And so it really gave me an opportunity to be on the, kind of the front end of what that approval process was like. And, and what happened was that because of the volume of the new programs, CHEV, which is the, the State Council of Higher Education in Virginia, they have to approve those programs and then VDOE has to approve. And so what happened was all those programs got approved much later than we thought they were going to get approved. Like the full official final approval of those programs didn't happen until, I think, June or July. And so because of that, things like the handbook and all of those things, although we were getting ready, we weren't able to really pull the trigger on some of those. And so we missed the deadlines within the university. And so what the students will see is, you know, as those handbooks are updated, they'll see that there'll be more updated information in there. There's also, and I think with anything new, you know, these are the first undergraduate, the first undergraduate degree programs that has been approved at VCU in the past 10 years. And that was really interesting because when you think of institutional knowledge, most of the provost office staff, you know, that dealt with, that dealt with academic affairs are all brand new. You know, in terms of faculty senate and deans and, you know, so, so there's a lot that even though we were very prepared, there are things that we're realizing, you know, some small things that we didn't realize because, you know, we don't start undergraduate programs. That's not something we do all the time. You know, we might start graduate programs, but not necessarily brand new undergraduate degree programs. And so, and so I think we'll see some of that documentation, infrastructure, handbooks and all of those things. We'll see that, you know, as, as those headlines approach and pass and we submit those. And, and then, you know, most of those are published online, so we'll definitely see that. And, and we're building that infrastructure within the school. You know, we've made hires within our student services office to better support students and advisors. And, and we'll continue to grow in that support for students.
Great. Thank you so much for answering that question and for all the support that you provide. Another question that was posed was, I know you mentioned earlier briefly about the possibility of going online. Do you think that is a chance going online for the fall semester?
So it's one of those things, and, and I have my council of deans meeting actually this afternoon at 1:30. And, and, you know, that's going to be on the agenda. So I'll have a better idea of kind of the direction in terms of what the university is thinking. But a big factor, or probably the biggest factor that's going to drive whether we are still in remote teaching status in the fall will be COVID-19. That will be the biggest factor. If we're still in a shelter in place, and I think we, you know, we're in a state with a governor that is probably more on the conservative side in opening things up. I, I know at the national level, you know, there are conversations about we need to open up as soon as possible. You know, there, there are concerns that, you know, if we open up too soon and, you know, factors such as more widespread testing, that we'll have a second, a second round of COVID-19. And, and so my sense is that we'll be on the conservative side in making those decisions. But I think we'll know more in the next three weeks because at least what our health department experts are saying is that we're going, we're going to hit our, our AA apex. Our beginning of the flattening of the curve is going to happen in these next two weeks, in the last two weeks or towards the end of the month. And so if that actually happens and we have significantly fewer cases than, let's say, New York, I think we have under 140 deaths and I think it might be 5,000 cases statewide. You know, I, I think the June, I'm hoping, I'm hopeful that the June 10th number is going to hold up. But what could create a problem with that is if some other states decide to try to go back to normal, you know, May 1, you know, and you think about the, you know, I-95 corridor and people going north and south and stopping in Virginia at rest stops and things like that. That, that's a concern that I have is, is that, you know, we can be conservative, but if other people are not, then that could create a vulnerability for us. So I think we'll know more in the next, you know, three weeks. We'll know more in the next three weeks what the numbers are looking like. But I am, at least the conversations that I'm hearing, kind of at the dean's level and above, that we are hoping and planning towards fall, you know, to go back to regenerational instruction, but wanting to make sure that people are prepared to pull the trigger on moving to remote instruction if we need to.
Great. Thank you for providing such a detailed response, especially given the uncertainty of everything that's happening during this time. So one more question before we open it up to the group. Can you talk a little bit about the impact of students who may be studying abroad or have plans to study abroad?
Yeah. So the, I know in terms of study abroad, that's, that's been, you know, that's been closed. That's not happening. I know we have one of our faculty members in Council of Education, Dr. Capria Johnson, has a, a program that she just started. I don't know if she was planning to begin this summer. I think she was, but it's definitely not happening. But it was a study abroad to Ghana, Africa. You know, that's obviously not happening. I think it was going to be in the summer. So we'll have to look for next summer for that. We don't have any other study abroad programs. We had one a few years back. That was a collaborative with Ed Foundations and Teaching and Learning to Italy, but we haven't had that in about three years. So I think for us in the school, in the School of Ed, to my knowledge, that was our only study abroad program was that new one that was just started in Ghana, and that's been put on hold. But for students participating in other, in other study abroad programs, that's, you know, I believe, not believe, I know those programs are on hold now. And there'll have to be a decision with those programs made depending for fall because, you know, we'll have to look at what countries those programs are in. A number of those study abroad programs tend to be in the summer. I know Humanities and Sciences, they had one to Jamaica, and that was canceled. But that was also one that occurs during the summer.
Thank you for answering that question. Now we're going to open it up to the group. I think Breon has a few questions for us.
Yes, I do have one for you, Dr. Dare. Some of the undergraduate students have expressed some concerns about lack of grades from their faculty members, or a lack of midterm grades, or great delay in receiving their grading feedback. So with the onboarding of this new pass/fail or flexible grading policy for the spring semester, they're having a difficult time deciding what they should do with their grades. So do you have any advice or suggestions for students on how to navigate this?
You know, that's an interesting question. You know, we have a lot of courses being taught right now. And I know it was, you know, definitely a, a quick adjustment for faculty who weren't previously teaching online to move to remote instruction. And then as they moved to remote instruction, the decision, you know, that option was created for pass/fail. Even though our faculty have moved to remote instruction, we should still be following what's happening in the syllabus. So there should still be, you know, if, just make up an example. If, you know, if the syllabus indicates that there's a, you know, a test on April 15th, you know, there should be a test on around April 15th, you know, many of, you know, because many of our degree programs are accredited and we have state-level accreditation, part of those accreditations is certain expectations of what's supposed to happen in courses. So there really should not be a big shift in, in the types of evaluations that are happening in the course. How that evaluation happens, that may need to shift, right? So instead of doing a paper and pencil test in class, maybe that faculty member has to move to some type of an online format. And that may create some delays, you know, in terms of looking at how you're, how are you going to adjust some type of a test or evaluation, you know, to remote instruction? And, and so on one level, it'd be good to, you know, definitely keep in touch with the faculty member. Ask that question, you know, if, you know, if there, if there are evaluations that are not happening or if the delay, you know, moves past a week or something like that, I would definitely say to contact, to contact your faculty member. And if, you know, for some reason you don't hear anything, you know, I would contact the department chair and ask that question. What I will do though is I will make sure that we, and I'll ask Dr. Simon to maybe take lead on this, who's our associate dean for Student Affairs and Inclusive Excellence, is to, is to just send something out to the department chairs to let them know that, that this question came up from students and for them to check with their faculty to make sure that we are continuing to provide this, you know, provide commensurate evaluations for students in their courses because they're going to need that information to make an informed choice on the pass/fail option. And also to see if there's some additional supports that we can provide that faculty. You know, because there could be very good reasons why there's a delay in that. So we definitely, you know, we want to be supportive for the students, but we also want to make sure that we're supportive for our faculty. So we'll definitely, we'll definitely address that.
Thank you. I also have one other question for you. Several of the students that I've spoken with, and you alluded to this earlier, have lost their jobs from being in food service or something to that extent. Are you aware of any other financial supports that students might have available to them through School of Education or through VCU in general? Especially for those who have not gone through teacher preparation yet. So I know a lot of our SOE scholarships are for students who have gone through teacher preparation. So I know a lot of our SOE scholarships are for students who have gone through teacher preparation. Do you have any updates on financial assistance for students?
Yeah, in terms, I don't, I don't, we, we don't have anything in, in terms of more broader or more general financial assistance. We don't, I'm, I'm not aware of us having anything in the School of Ed. With that being said, I know that there's supports at the university level. I know we have Rampantry and, and I mentioned that forum. We'll definitely send out a summary email. We compiled some different information in anticipation of some questions that might be asked and resources. So we're going to be sending that out to our students at the end of this call. And so you'll have information on those, on that link if you need some support. And also if you have a fellow student who is in need of support. And I know that's very broad, so it's not just, it's not just, you know, academic support, but, you know, if, it's, it's, it's more general to what supports do students have. Now, what I will say, if any of our School of Education students are running into any challenges, definitely let us know. So just because we don't, you know, we've, we've, we've not planned for, which is, you know, we're going to have to really look at this. We've not planned for, for this level of broader-based challenges or distress that might happen. But to that, soe@vcu.edu, please send that email because what we want to do is to, is to really find out what we can do, if anything, but also to definitely connect and reach out. Because what's challenging is, is, is when you're in a challenging position, you might be in distress or near distress or needing support. That can be a compounding stressor of finding the support. And so the minimum that we can do is at least take that additional pressure of finding the support. Reach out to us, folks in our student services office, in the dean's office. You know, we, we will work to, to help address, find solutions. So please don't take on all of that additional stress and pressure. Email us and let us try to help you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any more questions from the group?
And I know Corey just posted the links for students requested, requesting support and also for students requesting help for another student. So we have that in the chat and we will also send that out in a summary email at the end of this call.
Okay, great. If there's no many, no more questions, I just want to say thank you, Dean Dare, for doing this today. And to the students who posed your questions for today's town hall. As Dean Dare mentioned, if you didn't get to pose your question, the team at VCU is here to help. Please feel free to email the School of Education or reach out directly to Corey Humphrey or Meredith Mello. These names and email addresses are listed in the chat box for you. Also, if you missed the announcement at the beginning, we will plan to post a recording of the town hall as soon as we are able to do so. So if you missed any of this, a full recording will be available. As you heard from the dean, the School of Education faculty and staff are genuinely here to support you in any way and help all of us navigate through this challenging time. Don't think twice about reaching out to the resources and email addresses listed in the chat box if you need any help. Thank you again, everyone. It was great to see you all. Please stay home and be safe. And we look forward to seeing you all again in Oliver Hall when it's safe to return. Have a great day, everyone.
Great. And thank you so much, Katie. I appreciate your leadership on student council and, and all the work that you're doing to support students and your, and your leadership in helping us having what I believe has been an informative town hall. So thank you so much and thanks to Meredith, Corey and all the other folks involved.
Well, thank you so much as well. All right. Goodbye, everyone.